I got two of the.
You like about a fifty or so, maybe a bit higher.
That one was there.
I'll go about that.
I got, we got six fifty nine in the.
Five to six fifty nine.
So if, I guess I have another question too, is the, um.
Trust me too.
The state guys said they don't see the reason why we couldn't do the, but renting would have to be through. But do we have to continue?
I said, hey, you seem bad over there.
You bring it around.
You like being, I'm right at the school tomorrow.
Like a public notice thing, okay?
If they don't come in, that's our problem.
Okay.
You can't do a place.
Did, did you want to say?
No, I'm alive. Um, this can handle what I expect. She's in prison. Okay, don't let me get it out. Is it waiting back here to holler or something? Yeah.
So just wait then.
Alright, we will begin our meeting tonight. Who's taking hands? I forgot, oh yeah. We'll start with, uh, Rota.
Um, see, Jim Foster. John Burke.
Here.
Good to Mr. Foster, thanks for recording.
Rhonda Keesling.
Rhonda says she knew they'll be later, might not make it.
Uh, David, now.
Here.
Here.
Gerald Smith, here. Mark Swaffer.
Here.
Thomas Harper.
Here.
Rod Bowen.
Retired. Uh, Mr. Bowen sent an email earlier today, he has resigned from the planning commission, okay?
And David Thomas, here.
Yeah, Rod sent a email out, I mean, I saw that, but he is officially retiring from, uh, planning commission. He's done a great job and our chairman, I, I was trying to remember how long he'd been chairman, it's been a long, long time. And, uh, he did a great job. Ms. Keesling, uh, is at the funeral home, those who may not know, Glenn Haynes' mother died. Of course Rhonda worked for Glenn for years and years at the thing, so she's gone down for the visitation. And, uh, she may not make that, uh, the meeting tonight. And, uh, I don't know anything about Mr. Foster. Alright, seeing no business on the agenda, we will move on to our first item on new business, which is the rezoning of Highway twenty five.
You've seen this before, I talked to the, uh, Chairman Dwight about it, he said that if it comes back through, he'll, he'll support it as a A one rezoning to that area. Uh, it is past the point that I said, uh, basically from blanking ship, yeah, we need to stop rezoning. This is past that, so in my opinion, it's fine to rezone.
So he wants to rezonate.
To A one.
A one, to agriculture. Okay, does anyone here speak for him?
Um.
You are, I know, I just wanted, wanted to make sure he or someone representing him wasn't here.
Is this, is this the track that he said he couldn't sell as a commercial?
Yeah.
Cause it's a state.
And then he wanted to get it rezoned to like the downtown area, but that wound up not really being, uh.
What it was intended for.
Yeah, a doable, uh, idea. And, uh, so I guess now he's, I guess it was A one in the beginning, wasn't it, or?
I think it originally was A one, then the state came through and they made everything along that road all the way up to Land Tate as a commercial. Um, could they give, really an option?
And I think that's one of the odd things that you need to think about, uh, on property like this. This is the property mortaring, I mean, it's right on Highway twenty five. From the city limits to the intersection. And if there's going to be any commercial property, that's where it's going to be, cause I don't know how many decades of our lives it will take before it ever got out that far. But that is something we need to, uh, keep in mind as we move forward. Uh, where do we expect our commercial growth in the future to, uh, to take place? And that type of thing. Mary, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure, um, I'll just kind of give a quick overview of what I have in this report, like you said, this came out here before another request. So the property is in the Hartwell, in a services district, west of the downtown area, um, about a mile and a half, two miles, south side of Highway twenty five west. The surrounding properties in this area are all in C two highway, commercial along Highway twenty five west, and they want agricultural forestry outside of the urban services district. I have a map in here, you can see exactly what you're saying. Pretty much just any property that would belong on Highway twenty five west, they're just off that C two zoning, um, and then anything that was outside that. So like one parcel off outside in the urban services district is still the A one agricultural forestry. So the growth plan identifies the subject property is within the urban services district, district, and in a planned growth area. Uh, based on the map that are in that plan, it looks like there is some water and sewer out that way. And Highway twenty five west is called up as a major arterial in the major part of our land. Um, the C two zoning that it is right now, is that, that district is established to provide areas where principal uses of land are devoted to general and highway commercial activities along the principal thoroughfares. And then the A one zoning that he's requesting to go to is a district that's intended to preserve space for agricultural uses, which together compromise an important segment of the town of the economy, of Hartwell. So the primary intent of the A one district is to minimize conflicts between agricultural and various non-herm activities. Cement lands that suited for intense aguses to be reserved for those purposes. And to prevent lands unsuitable for development of an urban or non-oral nature due to topographic problems, locations, or the inability to provide urban services. So areas that have the A one zoning are primarily areas where growth is deemed undesirable for more or less resource reasons. So in looking at this applicant's request, that C two zoning that it is now, based on the zoning description, is suited to principal thoroughfares. And is consistent with the grounded properties in the urban services district. The properties behind the subject property that are outside of the urban services district are zones, A one agricultural forestry. So if the commission determined that this property in particular is unsuitable for development of an urban or non-oral nature due to those topographic problems, locations, or the inability to provide necessary urban services, then the S A one zoning district might be appropriate based on that zoning description. The property does not, however, have identified significant slopes, so slopes that are greater than fifteen to twenty percent that I've been able to find on the map, although I did drive out there and it is pretty sloped property, even though by the measure of what's considered significant, it doesn't quite meet that. Uh, and it has no flood plain or other limiting environmental factors, and appears to be served by water and sewer in the area, not necessarily served for in the area.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for signing out for, for Mary? Discussion.
Is the owner just trying to get it resold?
That's his intent, is to, is to sell it.
Cause he was gonna build a house there.
He was gonna build a house there, yeah.
To be honest with you, we, we've been dealing with this now for several months. And it looks to me like a gentleman bought a piece of property, didn't know what to do with it. And is trying to get it rezoned a couple of ways, so we can finally do something with it. And to me, that's not our, our, um, the intent of this commission, but, um, again, that's my opinion. The property is on either side of that, both that houses on.
They do, and eventually they're maybe resold.
Yeah, they've been there quite a while, the first house, when you're going out there, if you were driving from here towards two thirty one. Real nice house, brick house, right there on the left, the first one that you come to, I think it's got a tape drive, it's very nice.
Yeah, with the outbuilding in the back there, yeah.
Uh, that gentleman came before us, and he, it made so much sense then, but, uh, I remember that very well, cause he came back years later wanting to do some rezoning, and, and I reminded him of what I told him that night. That, uh, when you, when you ask for a rezoning in a commercial area, and he built very nice houses and everything. But then he was trying to unload the property. And, um, you know, you, when you build something in a commercial area, you don't really have the right to come back and complain about the commercial area building up around you later on. Years later, and, and, and I had to remind him of that. And that's basically, and I, I think he moved after that, to be honest with you, I think he sold the house and moved, but, uh, that, that's one of the things that you get into when you, when you rezone or try to do something, you think you're helping someone. And then years later, they want to do something else that's not really what, you know, what you, uh, you know, what, again, they, they want you to just keep on helping them. Other discussion? Thoughts, motion, anything?
So Sam says these other two, that house and other houses will eventually have to be rezoned, what do they rezonate to?
Right now, they're.
They're commercial right now, right?
They're commercial right now.
So if they try to sell those, they're going to get rezoned to residential?
Or.
So.
Part of that is kind of like what we ran into here on Hilltop, if you remember, where the state came in and just automatically rezoned a lot, a lot of property.
This is the same case, right? The state came in and rezoned these, it's something.
I, I would like to make a, uh, just a point of difference between the two is Hilltop had, has a cliff, and not really has access to the main thoroughfare, like.
Oh, I went, I went by the geography, my, my point was the something.
Yeah.
And people having to re, get their property rezoned through no vault of their own.
Exactly.
Just to be able to get insurance or, or whatever.
But my point is, is I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't rezone those on Hilltop, because they're not commercial lots, I mean, they don't even have access really to.
And like Dennis, with pulling the house, we'll eventually have to do those others down there.
Yeah.
When, when that, when they try to do something where they have to borrow some money or something.
Yeah, some of those houses went in after it was rezoned commercial, and that should not have happened. Uh, it should have been stopped there, uh, but the ones that were already there would have had to be rezoned, because it wasn't their fault. Uh, but wh- where we're at now is we've got, uh, a link of several properties that's in that zoning area that already has houses on it. So there's really nothing we can do about it, either tell them they have to sell them as commercial, or rezoned it to agriculture, so they can get them residential.
Something like that. You know where that trailer is, I mean, they used, that was originally, that was commercial, because there was a commercial business, they're selling trailers. Traders, and the one that's still there was their office, and, and so they go out of business and they sell that as a residence. To recoup whatever money they could, you know, so we kind of get stuck with some stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, uh. Any other thoughts? Alright, so what we have before us is a request from the applicant to rezone his property from C two highway commercial to A one agricultural district. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion? I believe the.
I, I believe that.
Dance three times, aren't you? And then right there.
Sounds alright.
Parliamentary procedure.
I believe that we don't, uh.
No, I was about, if, 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 since I danced three times, it'll die from lack of a motion anyway, alright, okay, alright.
Then the formal, it would be sending to the city council without a recommendation.
To the county court?
County court, sorry.
So basically then, what we're doing is we're sending this on to the county commission without a recommendation, unless someone would like to make a motion to deny the request. You take, I hearing one, then this, this applicant, application will be sent to the county commission, uh, with no, uh, recommendation, recommendation from the planning commission. Okay? Item, second item before us is a rezoning request from Daniel Burke, four eighty five, here at Langton. Having looked at this earlier, it looks to be one of those things that got rezoned and, uh, after Mr. Burke already, uh, had built and everything down there, the state, uh, it got put in an industrial area. And I'm somewhat familiar with this property, Miss, Miss Harrow lives up on that hill there, are you, are you Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir.
You live on around her, around the curve there?
Yes, sir, the Perk's house.
And, uh, so I think what Mr. Burke is trying to, to do is clean up his zoning to, so that, uh, it, the, the zoning of his property can actually match how the property's being used. Now, Mr. Burke, if I have mistaken that, please correct me.
I started that as correct.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to say about it?
No, sir.
Samuel?
So looking at older maps, basically, the only thing I can figure out on why that zone is, is on one map, it has this blob on it, this pink blob, which, which is industrial. On a newer map, the blob shows up for, over at the TBA plant. So the only thing I figure is TBA plant's going in, they try to adjust the map, they put it on the wrong por- portion of Travis County. And then the next year, they fixed it, but they never removed that.
And I remember some years ago, we had to do the same thing for another, uh, house, another property.
Well, last year, we did one for a large property on Harrow Lane.
You can see it on the map.
So to me, this is just a housekeeping measure, but, uh, we need to follow the guidelines, didn't play that.
So properties outside of the Hartwell Urban Services District located east of Harrow Lane and south of Hartwell. The surrounding properties in this area are all in M one general industrial district, except for the large property to the east that was rezoned to A one agricultural forestry last year. Um, the road is not an arterial or collector of the major thoroughfare plan. For the growth plan, this property is outside of the urban services district and outside of the urban growth boundary, it is indicated as a rural area. Rural areas can be used as commercial, residential, industrial development, but at a low density, it should retain the character of the area. So in my rendering, the applicant's request, the property is suited to the R one residential zoning description, and the R one residential zoning is consistent with the growth plan, growth plan designation of a rural area. R one residential zoning is not, however, consistent with other zonings in the area. The property is surrounded by properties that are in M one general industrial, A one agricultural forestry. Uh, it does appear, however, and as we've been talking about in this meeting, that the news and parcels also have existing residential uses. So if the commission is concerned about this becoming one R one residential zoning spot in the middle of all that M one, uh, and being inconsistent with the surrounding area, it could be suggested to the property owner, and I have a feeling this will probably happen in the near future, to encourage those additional residential properties in the area to join that request to rezone to R one residential as well.
Yeah, in other words, when you see your neighbors, probably would be a good idea, let them know what you're doing, or doing, so they're taking.
Yeah, they all told me they were going to have it done at the same time.
Yeah, but you always gotta have the, the leader, somebody has to take the initiative, which like you gotta let, and, Sam?
So there's, where he's located, there's about five other homes, uh, that are all one acre lots, so, um, I suggest we go to R one, because it's one acre. We couldn't have done like the other property, we went to agriculture, there's, there's no option on it.
Yeah, and you can't, you can't quite see on this map, um, the purple does a good job of delineating with Harry Lane, but yeah, the parcels next to him are all at one acre. So I have a feeling, and as he said, the others will want to follow suit. Uh, but I mean, if the commission has a petition about a young one property in that whole area, one acre, now, that's.
I haven't been down that way in a long time, but it's a very nice, uh, community down through there, instead of some nice.
It's clean.
Very nice, down there, very nice. Discussion, Mr. Knopper?
Make a motion to approve this request.
Okay, have a motion to send this on to the county commission with approval from the planning commission? Do I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Swaffer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the poles, say nope. Just pass unanimously, and this will go to the county commission. Uh, they will have to have two readings on it, have you had the process explained to you, Mr. Burke?
Uh, partially.
Okay, well, they'll have to have two readings, hopefully, it can get on their agenda for this month, which will be the last, might be, can we get it on?
You can have a thought, um, so I think that's two weeks away, it'll be on there.
It's reading, I'll wait when I, it's in two weeks.
I just don't know, maybe.
Twenty eight, twenty eight.
Two weeks from tonight, one two.
Yes, it'll, it'll be out there.
Okay, so that'll be the first reading, and then the, uh, county commission meeting in October. They would have a public hearing, and then the final vote on it.
Alright.
And so by the end of, uh, October, should be good. I don't see any problems with it, but, you never know. I would, if I were you, I would go especially to the first county commission meeting, uh, just to be able to tell them what you want, and, and what you're trying to do. Alright, moving on. I guess number three is a site plan review, uh, with, uh, Mr. Jason Ford here, representing Hartwell Cabinet and Millwork, uh, group housing on Highway twenty five. Jason, would you like to tell us what you're wanting to do?
Well, we came six, eight months ago, and we approved, or approved the first two apartments on the left. Dummy me, didn't realize, uh, that I needed it all, so we came back with all of it, instead of just two apartments and a little bit of portion of it.
Okay.
Uh, so like I said, it's, uh.
So you're trying to do some housekeeping, instead of just a portion, you're just trying to.
Well, that's what the whole property's zone of, or so.
Instead of doing it sections of the time, we're giving it all approved at one time.
I understand, I understand.
That's, that's it.
Okay, Samuel?
Uh, I see no issue with it, we went over, uh, all the details, it's zoned properly, uh, is aware that the new rule for the fence and vegetation barrier. So I don't see any issue with not approving it.
Got it, bro.
Okay, um, anybody want to look at the site plan?
Yeah, I'll, uh, raise a hand.
Um, so she.
Okay, okay. If I recall right, while y'all were looking, in the original, uh, time, and this was brought up years ago by Jason's dad, Jerry, uh, this portion of land was always set aside for, uh, apartments and that type of thing, just kind of been waiting on the appropriate time in, in the, you know, when they can actually, when they're needed. And, uh, from what I can see, they're very much needed right now. While y'all were looking at that, I'll let Mary go ahead and start her recording.
Okay, so in this R three zoning district, the lot area requirement for multi-family dwelling is ten thousand eight hundred square foot total. This property is about three hundred thousand five hundred square foot, so it well exceeds that requirement. Um, it needs to have thirty six hundred square foot, um, per unit, and then have an overall density of, um, about twelve units per acre. So this project has fifty six units on about six point nine acres, so the overall density is about eight point one, so it meets that. Um, and there's about five thousand square foot per dwelling unit, so they're all set on the zoning requirements. Um, I've got a list of the requirements broken down for the site plans, and then looking there for group housing, um. Parking and parkers, so I'm just gonna give you the highlights of the items that need to be looked at for this. Um, in summary, for the group housing development standards, those are met, however, the site plan shows shared dumpsters between each of the apartment units, they'll see. Um, there's a pretty loose requirement in the zoning code for screening, um, screening for shared dumpsters. There's no kind of indication of that, so that could be something that the commission wants to ask about or clarify, um, on that front. And then, as Sam mentioned, there's the overall requirement in three point one one zero, that new buffer requirement that requires buffers between, um, uses. So because this of us, a residential, um, we've zoned the area on the east and the north sides, that buffer requirement would apply on the two sides of the property, so that required buffer consists of solid fence, landscaping, including trees, um, to create an opaque screen between the new development and those existing residential zone areas, um, which needs to be ten foot wide. So on my front, I see no issue recommending approval with the conditions that the dumpster enclosures be screened to satisfy some of the planning commission, and that buffer strip requirement be met, which just isn't indicated on the site plan.
Jason, do you have these, so to make sure that it's put on your site plan, okay, okay.
I copied the survey and all that, so we should be at least pretty sort of, um.
Alright, discussion with members. So what we would be looking for then would be either a motion to approve or deny, uh, and this is just a review, but for the site plan coming in. Uh, applicant had been made aware of, of a couple of things that need to be added to the site plan, so any motion should be contingent upon those being added. Was the will of the planning commission.
Do you have a motion to approve those predictions?
Have a motion to approve with those items, uh, added to the site plan, by Mr. Swaffer, seconded by Mr. Harper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the poles, say nope. It does pass unanimously, it will be sent to the, uh, county commission. Oh, no, no, it's not a rezoning.
Yeah, it's on the site one.
It's been.
Should be brought back next month for the final.
Okay. I'm happy myself there, Jason, you don't have to go to the planning commission, I need to the county commission, which is good. One bit of housekeeping I need to go back to is, uh, I need, uh, most, everybody got the, uh, copy of the minutes, did everybody get the minutes emailed too?
Yep.
Everybody's had opportunity to, uh, read and go over them, uh. Does anybody, did anybody find any mistakes that need to be corrected, or anything added? If not, I will accept a motion to approve, so moving. Seconded by anyone?
Seconded.
Alright, who approved, uh, Thomas? Motion by Mr. Harper to approve, seconded. Motion by Mr. Harper to approve, second by Mr. Swaffer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They do pass or approve unanimously. If it's mine without. George, do we need to try to, I was trying to think back a month ago, 'cause Mary didn't have it. Who did the, uh, motions get to do, when both of us are here?
Yeah, I, I wrote the, if you see the motions for denunciations at the chair and everything, it just says, "What was made?" So, I just meant, I mean, to say that if we can't.
All right.
If we can come up with a new motion, so that's a little harder, um, but there wasn't any agenda items that ended the election office. So, gonna let it slide on the meeting, it's a good.
Okay, so, this is.
All I, all I know is Dennis and I got real.
That's all I had, I was, uh, no issues report.
Sam, we're ready for your report. Did you, you have something else to say?
No, uh.
I forgot it. I was just gonna let you, I was gonna let you go with your report.
No, I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. What was it?
If you have a question, search your part, search your part, sorry.
He have. Oh, I don't have anything to add. I don't, no, I don't have anything to add. Yes, sir. No, sir. No. But rather than most, that motion, you're here? Yeah. You might better be. Okay. I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
It's Desiree.
Okay.
Hi. Um, so, I'm in the process of purchasing, um, a little over fifteen acres on Beezwee's Bend. Um, we're building a single-family home on a property, um, but we, my whole family loves camping and stuff like that, and being right in the Cumberland River, we're like really excited about it. Um, we are looking to possibly, and I know that this, um, is okay as far as restrictions and stuff like that at the property and what it's purged for, um, but, um, there, and I know that this is something I'm gonna have to bring back, I think you said at the next meeting, um, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that's the plan. We're supposed to be closing on the third day of October, so I don't have much time, but there are these cool little, like, permanent, like, tents almost, um, and we want to put a couple in the back of the house. Um, they are considered outbuildings, I believe, so they would be approved. But in the event that, mostly it would be used for, like, family visiting and friends and stuff like that, to come out of the property, enjoy your time, you know, enjoy themselves. Um, in the event that we want to possibly rent them a couple of weekends out of the summer, I guess that's what I would have to bring to the board to get approved as far as, um, it'd be like camping, I guess, um, and have to go.
Well, it'd be like, uh, they'd be like home occupation, maybe?
It'd be, it'd kind of fall into the cat ground, but our rules for the cat grounds are large, it's something not full-size cat ground, instead of something like hers, so we'll have to make some kind of, uh, exceptions to our rules, 'cause she won't need all of them, um, 'cause it's talking about, you know.
The one thing that potentially comes to mind are the, uh, insurance. Should she rent to someone and they have an accident or something on her property?
That's on her. I mean, if she, if she wants to rent her tents out.
Lawsuits tend to go up the ladder instead of just down, you know, uh, and that's my question, or that's my concern is, could the county be held any way in there, or is it like Sam says, that's on her?
I was criminal law, not property law, but I would think if, if it's some kind of condition on her property, it was not tied to anything the county did, well, then that would be on her as a property.
Even if we made an approval, like a home occupation or a home camping.
Well, you're not going out and looking physically, looking at, is she gonna trip over this roof or anything like that? You're looking at, does the proposed use of the property meet the requirements that's in the zone? You're not going out and doing a visit inside, see, well, they're gonna trip over, you know, something natural or something.
And that, that's what I would just, I would just return about potential liability.
What is it on agriculture?
To the county. Sam?
He asked what it was zoned. It's zoned agriculture, so, you know, if she puts two of them out there, um, right now, currently, it's family use, but she's wanting to let y'all know that that's what she's gonna bring in front of y'all, just so she has the option to, if somebody is interested, renting.
Yeah, it's not something that we're planning on doing a lot of time, but if, in, in the event, if, you know, people, like, it's really, you know, whatever, um, we'd like the option.
And I really appreciate you giving us a heads up. That's why I'm kind of giving the mayor a heads up on any potential, should you decide to rent some liability and that kind of thing, you know.
What about business license? You shared your business license?
If she starts taking, I'm not a business license person, but from what I understand, if she starts taking money, she has to make a certain amount of money before she's actually required.
If you make less than three thousand dollars, you're not hard to have a business license. Three thousand to ten thousand, you have to have like, basically like a minor business license. Over that, you need to get a regular business license, but it's fifteen dollars for a business license, or you do it minor or major. It's fifteen dollars.
How many acres was it?
Fifteen point two four.
Now, or would that fall under, uh, would that fall under two dwelling zones or single lot?
So, it wouldn't be considered an actual dwelling, because it doesn't, and it doesn't have that, it's just a town.
Yeah, so if it's not permanently residential structure, it's just a handmade structure, it's not gonna be.
It would just fall into, if she doesn't get approval, and I have the assumption that she's renting them, I can ask her to remove them. If she gets approval, then she's free to rent them, you know, have families take them.
Well, I think it's, uh, I haven't read the ordinance personally on what's in there for campsites, but I'm sure there's probably a limit on the number of days, it's not gonna be.
So, you can't stay at a campsite for more than thirty days?
Yeah. Can't stay in a campsite for more than thirty days, so that would be per limit. If she goes through a good campsite approval, it's not gonna be a permanent residential structure after thirty days. You gotta move out, otherwise, then Sam can say, okay, you're long-term renting.
I guess that's why you see these people moving from.
Yeah, one campsite should eat other, yeah, that's a fair deal.
Get off two thirty one, where they decided that there's a parking, like, parking for sale?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
It's, it's way down towards that.
It's way down there.
Yeah, she's over in Beezwee's Bend, David, which is over in Wilson County.
Yeah, I'm telling you, I'm not the way you come about that.
I think you're thinking about here.
Oh, two thirty one.
Yeah, uh, she's long over there.
Yeah.
She got to go to Wilson County just to get over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a forty minute, an hour ride, it's.
Bob Hill used to live over there, the Hill property, y'all were old like me, remember the Hill family? It's over in that area.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It is?
It's breathtakingly beautiful. I'm very excited.
Our bad teacher may have asked, living over there, going with the bus, over.
Well, I'm a bus driver for Wilson County School, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a drive, but, um, there's, there's.
Well, I can, I can show that for you.
Oh, you guys need bus drivers?
We do.
All right, so Wilson County.
I highly recommend Triasville County schools.
Yeah, well, you never know.
Actually, I can give you a phone number, I'm very serious.
Okay. This does kind of fall into a discussion we had off and on about, like, the Airbnb's, and how do you zoning for those? You know, people actually just renting out their house.
Do we have Airbnb's? I mean, would we even know if we did have?
See, that's the thing, she would easily, you know, set this up and be renting on it, and no one even know. She's at least nice enough to come with us and be hitting those straightforward.
Oh, yeah, I didn't wanna.
And that's, I think that should go a long way with any decision that we.
Well, I agree, she's, she's aced it, I believe, right now. But you're right, yeah. Any other comments, questions, or anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This gentleman back here that came in a little bit later, he seemed to have an issue. I just want to know, is that something that was on our agenda for tonight?
It's not, no, we're, we're gonna talk afterwards.
Okay. Okay.
And if I could go on, I would just update the commission. You know, we had submitted for the, uh, two thousand twenty multi-modal grant through the state, the sidewalks, kind of, from a streetscape project to end at Uptown, the Murray Boulevard and Broadway intersection. We did get accepted into the application phase, so we'll be moving into that, trying to get an application together to submit and get that project done. And that'd be, again, it's gonna have to go through planning and all this stuff, so it's gonna be a drawn-out process, but we are accepted into the second round, so we're moving into the application phase.
That would be awesome, for those of you who may not know, the mayor put out that sometime this fall, T-Dot's gonna put out the, uh,
Yeah, I'll go, thank you.
Intersection up here at Citizens Bank, and that, if we could combine that with a sidewalk all the way up Broadway, that, can you imagine how much safer pedestrians going up and down that way, and, and how much better it would look and all that? That would just, that would be awesome.
And also, I took it, taken it to the planning, excuse me, the county commission, just through the steering committee, I don't know. I'm wanting to start replacing some of the other sidewalks in the downtown area. There's not a grant attached to that, it's just us paying to replace the sidewalks, but, as you know, especially if you get around total limits and something like that, other areas, the sidewalks are not crumbling, they crumble. So, we really need to take care of that and make sure we are meeting current ADA requirements, 'cause that's something we need to do, so. As we move forward on that, that's definitely something we'll let the planning commission know, and then I'm looking at trying to pay the park, the gravel park lot next to Donald Taylor, Taylor does actually belong to the county.
It does.
So, we're looking to say that, but we gotta have some engineers come in, 'cause there's stormwater drainage issues there, and tie that into the existing system. And also, something I'm looking at, and I got you to notice these truck drivers, that gravel lot in between where Dr. Regru's office is and the fire station where those tractor trailer trucks parked, the fire department has asked me to look into making that overflow parking for the fire department, since they have more people coming on the fire department, they started to have some parking issues. That's where we're gonna look at making that overflow for them, and make it, you know, no overnight parking or something like that.
Is that county property?
It is county property. It's a county guy that, when those warehouses collapsed, they got it on a tag sale. So, it is county property, uh, and also, thank the commission. We are currently looking at places for a new jail. We have a county corrections partnership committee that is working with the Tennessee Corrections Institute at sites for new jail. We just had one meeting, so so far, we're looking at two possible sites. The first will be kind of in between the, the current sheriff's department and the fieldhouse for the high school football field. Uh, there is a plan to put one there, however, it is in the floodway. I don't know that that's gonna apply. Uh, the second site we're looking at was somewhere near that property I just mentioned, uh, over there by the fire station. That is currently in a one hundred-year flood plain, so if you build anything there, you're gonna have to raise it up. I'm not sure T-Dot's gonna be too happy with that, 'cause it flooded just this last week. If you build that up, that floodwater's gonna go somewhere else, and so that's something T-Dot, they've got hydraulic models and everything, don't look at it, so I'm not sure that's gonna fly, so if we have to go somewhere else, we're looking at potentially having to buy some property somewhere and build a new jail. But, uh, they're proposing right now, I believe it's like a hundred and eighty beds, you know, this is. And there is drastically an increase in the female beds in that new jail, 'cause right now, the renovation that was done in nineteen ninety on the current jail did not include that many female beds, and that's where you've really seen an explosion in your inmate populations in the females. So, but just let the commission know, we're in early, early stages of planning that. We're probably gonna hire an engineering firm to come out and do soil samples and everything, and evaluate sites as we move forward. But, again, I just wanted to let the commission know that that's something that'll be coming down the pipeline, and, um, try, we're getting doing some other things, maybe some improvements. I'm gonna take the T-Dot, do some maybe safety improvements out of two thirty one, twenty five intersection. We got some complaints, and people are running the stop sign, and so I'm gonna see, maybe we can do something out there, which for the time being, somebody had suggested putting the traffic light out there. T-Dot has let me know that if we're gonna do a traffic light, it's gonna be us to have to pay for it, and they said they started at least a hundred thousand dollars. So, maybe we can do some safety improvements out there, in the meantime.
What was that?
The intersection of two thirty one and twenty five up at Payne Store. So, we have several projects we're looking at as we go through, and obviously, I'm gonna get the planning commission feedback on that.
Traffic lights are extremely expensive, and they do fall totally on local governance.
Right, and that's where the kind of question came to me through Facebook about the, as you said, the Murray Boulevard and Broadway entrance, or excuse me, intersection right there with the traffic back up. We had initially looked at maybe doing a, call it a traffic center optimization. Uh, they had a grant one time, but you have to do the study. Well, the study would have had to coincide when they were coming out with this one, the intersection, the improvement up here. As it was originally scheduled, by the time you got done with your study, that project would have been just about ready to go out and bid, so it didn't make much sense to do them at the same time. By the time you made the decision not to do the study, well, the project got delayed, 'cause they had to do some reengineering for stormwater drains and all that down by GNO Garden Center. So, we're back kind of the same thing, if we're looking at trying to do a study and make sure we optimize it right, we're still getting, and by the time you're done, your project's starting, so. So, there would be improvement in that intersection, it's supposed to go to bid in fall two thousand twenty one.
Sure, lady.
And I do have, and I can give it to Mr. Edwards right now, and I don't remember if I sent him out, if not, I'll, I'll try to send him out to the commission. I did get the most up-to-date, uh, plans after the rideaway review and everything I got to him last week or week before last. So, I'll go back and look up the email, see if I sent him out or not. If not, I'll send him out to the planning commission, so I'll look to look at it.
Okay, thank you. I like those projects. The only thing, I would give you the same, uh, advice that I gave your predecessor. It's not fair for the, the sidewalks to be paid for completely by the urban service district. Everybody knows in sidewalks. Mr. Knoller, I think you should hold this thing to the fire on that.
And I will quote the charter to you that says, anything in urban services that is made of use for urban services has to be paid for by urban services.
Oh, it just, then we need to charge rent to all these county people to walk on.
I don't walk on.
I always have a problem with that. Everybody likes spending old city money, real, real good. All right, thank you, Mayor. Anybody else have anything to come before the planning commission's night? Mr. Knoller?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second by Mr. Swaffer. See you next month. Thank you for coming.